Welcome everyone. Glad to have everybody here. We go ahead and close off all the timers and all that fun type of stuff. And pull things back up on the screen so we can have a conversation if I get the right window. There we go. Got to move things around here. All right, I think we are there. So we're going to move the chat window off. If you guys have questions while we're going on here, don't hesitate to ask that in the chat. We'll try to monitor that and make sure that we're paying attention. I want this to be interactive with you guys, so don't hesitate if you have questions again to ask. You are more than welcome and want to go ahead and get started by seeing if any of you guys have any specific questions. I know we had a couple of questions come in earlier about chat G P T and which is the right app, where to go, anything like that. Before we dive in and we start talking about some stuff for you guys, do you have any specific questions that you want to make sure that we answer for you today? If so, you can unmute yourself and ask, or you're also welcome to put it over in the chat. While you're thinking about that, I want to let you know that if you're on the meeting here, you guys will get a recording of that. And I'll also be sending out a recording if you have to leave early or anything like that. We will be sending out a recording of everything as well, so that everybody will have access to that and you won't have to miss out on anything. So with that, any, any questions from anybody at all, anything I can do to answer for you guys whatsoever? Give just a second as we got a couple of people just popped in. Want to make sure we give them access to get in here. Bear with me here as I move one more window around. There we go. Trying to get everything organized on my desktop. All right. Well, I don't see any questions at the moment. Uh, there we do. Yeah, Ray's got one. I'm sorry, Ray, go ahead.
So Jonathan, I use a couple of different programs already and they tell me A I is embedded in them. Uh, I'm not certain if they're worthwhile or not. I use PropStream and Deal Machine and both of them tell me I can sort out uh, mega data through there. Am I paying ninety five dollars a month for nothing?
Well, I don't know those specific apps, so I can't tell you what other value you may be getting from those raid, but in, in my experience, and again, I don't know those specific apps. Normally when an app says it's got A I integrated into it, it's simply doing a link back to chat G P T or something like that. So they're generally not, you're not getting like some huge value as a general rule. Now there are some exceptions to that, uh, but very, very few. Uh, I've, I test out new apps every single week. Um, I rarely if ever keep them, uh, because I don't see a whole lot of value in them. Again, I don't know those two apps, but I'm a big proponent admittedly for learning how to use chat G P T Gemini and Claude and prompt in those because I find that I get the best possible answers that way. And that's really what I'm most interested in as we take a look around. So does that answer your question? I wish I could tell you yes, for sure on the ninety five dollars I can't. I don't know what else they do, but generally when there's A I integrated, they're, they're either using chat G P T or something similar to provide you with some basic access. Uh, and in my experience, most of the time you're better off just taking the information you have and using chat G P T Gemini Claude, whatever you're interested in at that point to work on that directly. Good question though. I appreciate that. Let's see, we've got another new message here. A minute. Let me take a quick look. All right, we hear from the little, you know, you're loving it. That's good. I love that. Well, today what my goal is, just so you guys know, and you're welcome to jump in and ask questions as they come up, but my goal for today, very simply is to one, first and foremost, answer any questions that you guys have about A I, how to put things together, things you'd like to be able to do. If you remember when we were down in Columbus, uh, we wrote an eviction letter and then we had fun. We wrote it from a condescending manner and everybody laughed. I thought that was good. I've actually used that three or four times since then, uh, and some other speeches I've done. I thought that that went over really well. If you guys have specifics that you're interested in, things that you want to learn how to do, this is your opportunity in a very small group setting. We've got, it looks like about ten or twelve of us here. This is your opportunity to ask. I am going to walk through each of the apps with you guys. We didn't have a great opportunity to do that down in Columbus, so I am going to walk through that and make sure I show you each of the apps so that you know what those are. Talk about a couple of new announcements that have happened already since we were in Columbus. It doesn't take long. And then make sure that you guys are getting everything answered from there. So I'm going to jump in and I'm going to walk through the apps. There's four basic apps that I want to show you. I talked about all of them down in Columbus. First is chat G P T, then Claude, then Gemini and perplexity. And I look, just I want to show you each of those and how they fit in. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And again, if you guys have any questions along the way, feel free to type them or just raise your hand and I will make sure that I call on you. I'll do my best to watch everything so we can get that taken care of. All right. So in theory, I should be sharing my screen now. Uh, you guys should be able to see my chat G P T window that's up. I have a couple of buttons that pop up on the side here. You can ignore those. I don't actually know exactly how to get rid of that. So ignore that, that this sidebar isn't something that's part of chat G P T. It's a plugin that I just installed and I'm not sure how to get rid of, but this is chat G P T. There's a couple of ways to access this. Ray actually asked a couple of good questions prior to the meeting on how do we know we're using chat G P T and not something else? So if we go into the app store, you're going to find there's a lot of applications acting like they are chat G P T, similar icons and everything else. So we can do that on our phone through the app, or we can do it on our computer, our tablet, or even our phones through a browser. And chat G P T is simple. You just go to chat G P T dot com. This is what you'll see. And when you come here, you will also generally see a left-hand menu that's up here on the side. Uh, just to give you guys some perspective. And this is how everything basically works across the board. So super, super simple. Uh, you don't need the left side open. It's just there for you if you want. And let me see, oops, I'm actually not in my right account. Let me see if I can log back into the right account I've got. I've got two of them. Nothing like keeping things interesting. And let me get logged in with the right account. When you uh, get logged in, you can go ahead and it looks like I'm going to have to enter a code. Give me just a second here guys. When you guys get signed up, you'll have the opportunity to do a free plan or a paid plan. I'm a big proponent of starting off with the free plan. And then when you get to the point that you need more usage and most of the models now are based upon usage limitations, so they do give you access to everything. And then at some point in time, they're going to say, oops, you've run out of usage for the moment. If you'd like to continue using it, then they want you to upgrade and pay them a little bit more money. Get there we go. Now I'm in my right account. So again, as I mentioned, you've got your left side menu. Uh, this is going to be at the top. You can store what are called custom G P Ts that you may want to use. Yours look different and then you'll see your history right here. So you can go on down and you can go back to anything that you did previously. For example, uh, earlier today, actually yesterday, somebody had asked about a prompt for an image in my Facebook group. Uh, and I had actually used chat G P T to help come up with that and even create an image. And I don't know where the image went, but there was an image uh, that was created. We'll just go ahead and create another one here. So you guys can see it. Uh, and as a reminder on chat G P T, chat G P T has a couple of features. So one, it's great with text. Two, it can create images like we're doing right now. Three, we can actually upload images and it can analyze those images for us and tell us what's in them. That can be really helpful if you've got a screenshot with a bunch of text on it, for example, and you want to be able to read that text. It's really helpful for that. And it also has voice capabilities. So I can do, you know, I can talk to it. I can upload audio files and it does data analysis with this little paper click right here. I can upload files directly from my computer or I can connect to Microsoft OneDrive or Google and I can have it actually look at files that are there. So if you had a spreadsheet, a PDF or anything like that, we can actually upload files directly to chat G P T. And we can utilize those right here to do data analysis, anything like that, that we're interested in. So that's chat G P T. You will notice there are multiple models that you have access to. You'll have G P T four O, G P T four and G P T three point five that for some reason is grayed out. I'm not sure why that is at the moment. Um, chat G P T is the most popular and they tend to have the most outages as a result of that. And that simply means that sometimes like now, one of the, uh, the areas where you're at may not be available. It looks like in this case because of images. So if I go back, there we go. Now if I have images off, I can pick the model. For most things that you're going to want to do in chat G P T, the newest model is the four O model. That's the one I recommend that you use. But you can use the others if you want. This is just the newest and most advanced. Also one of the fastest. So it works really good. So that's chat G P T. The next model that I want to show you guys and demonstrate to you guys is, let me see, what's the name? We've got a couple of questions that came up here a minute. Uh, first of all, with, with a links in the chat be available later or elsewhere? Uh, yes, the links that are any links that we put in chat, you guys can download directly. Uh, if you click at the bottom of the chat menu, you'll have an option to download uh, any of those directly uh, to your computer. Uh, the, I can also post those in the group later if you guys would like. So that's a good question, Robert on that. Robert and Sharon, uh, and what's the name of the personality test that we can upload to chat G P T? Great question. We'll go through that in just a minute with you guys. Uh, because you can use that personality test with chat G P T with Claude or with Gemini. It doesn't make any difference. You remember we were talking when we were in Columbus about the fact that I can go take a personality test and I can literally upload that personality test or the results of that test directly to any of the A I models. And based upon that, it's going to let me know, or it's going to know a lot about me and it's going to sound more like me. So we'll do that in just a minute. Don't let me forget that, uh, in case I do. So the second model I want to introduce you guys to is Quad. Quad also is available for free. Uh, and again, much like chat G P T, it's usage limited. So you know, for free, you get access to all the fun stuff. And then if you want more access or you run out of usage, then you can pay twenty dollars a month and you can get um, essentially unlimited. It's not quite unlimited, but you can get a lot more access. Um, Claude's been really busy today because they just released a brand new updated model today. Uh, what's called Claude three point five. So if I go and want to create a chat here, uh, let's go ahead and oops, that's not what I wanted. But I'll get rid of that. I'm going to turn off that real quick. Bear with me here a minute. We're going to turn off this plugin because I don't want it constantly popping up for us. And of course, there we go. Bear with me while I find it. So if you're not familiar, you guys can install lots and lots of browser plugins that give you additional capabilities. I've got that going here and I've got one that's getting in my way. There we go. Now it's off. And we shouldn't have to deal with that anymore. Reload the screen and it should go away. There we go. So, uh, when I want to start a chat here, again, much like chat G P T, I can upload documents. I can type in my question. I can see my history. In this case, instead of on the left, it's in the center. And there are multiple models that I can choose from as well in Claude. Works very similarly. Um, the one big difference between Claude and chat G P T is chat G P T has web access. So I can put in a website and it'll go out and look at that website. Claude does not, so I don't have the ability to see that there directly. The next one is Gemini. This is from Google. So if you guys are Google fans at all, this is a Google's version. It's pretty good. I don't think it's as good as chat G P T and Claude, but it is pretty good. And this also has web access. So if you're looking to look at a website, this is Gemini and it's Gemini dot Google dot com. Just for those of you that may be wondering. Uh, and again, three different versions, three different engines, same basic tools uh, and same basic capabilities. Uh, and again, much like others, you get free access, but it is limited on your usage and you can go to use it for more. Another one that we didn't talk about the other day that I want to show you real quick and is quickly making some inroads is a new one by the, the company that owns Facebook called Meta. Uh, brand new A I model, uh, a little bit different, but works very well overall. And it's just meta dot A I, that's M E T A dot A I. And the nice thing is if you have a Facebook account, this is totally free to use. And again, essentially unlimited usage, uh, so you can use that. And in the best way for me to compare it is it's kind of like if you were going to buy a new car and you were debating between a Dodge, a Chevy, a Ford, a Honda and a Toyota. They're all going to make a four-door sedan for families and or anything else you're looking at, maybe a minivan or whatever. Uh, but they're all going to be a little bit different and you're going to pick the one that you like best. I find A I models are very similar to that. You're going to find one that you like best and that's the one that you're going to resonate to, but I do encourage you to try them all out. Uh, and just get a feel for which ones you like best across the board. And then the last one I want to show you is called perplexity dot A I and perplexity dot A I is a search engine that also can answer questions for you. So just as an example, if I wanted to find out, let's say I wanted to cook lasagna tonight. If I did a Google search and we'll compare it here just to give you perspective, if I go to Google and I type in best lasagna recipe. It's going to give me a bunch of links I can go to, and that's not bad, you know, but notice I'm not getting a direct answer to my question. If I go over to perplexity and I type that same thing in, not only will I get the links that I got with Google, but I'm also going to get an app's a full recipe. And here you can say, here it comes up and it's actually giving me answers on how to do that, including baking time, how to layer it, how to put it together. So it actually analyzes the content and then gives you an answer based on A I for that. So a really cool feature is for search engines and it also can, can find out all kinds of information for you. I'll be candid, this has become my go-to search engine. I use perplexity now more than I use Google for searches. Uh, just does a, a great job across the board. Today we're going to be talking primarily about chat G P T. But again, what we're doing in chat G P T can almost always be done in Claude, in Gemini or in Meta as well, again, based upon your preferences. So any questions about those different models before we proceed? I want to make sure I'm not going too fast and we're answering your questions. Anybody got any specific questions that we can answer? So feel free to unmute yourself or type in the comments if you'd rather. Yes, go ahead.
Um, it, so, uh, I put a resume together and I use a little bit of A one A I, but not much. It's mostly my voice. Okay. And can you, can I type out the resume and upload it and then they can make it better? Or is that how it works?
Question. Yeah. So what I would do with a resume in that case is I'd probably either create it as a Microsoft Word document or a Google doc or something like that. And then I would upload that document and ask it to review. So let me, uh, as an example here, I'll just grab one that I did earlier today. Let's see if I've got something from my computer that I can grab real quick. Um, bear with me here a minute. So I did a proposal earlier today. So let's go ahead and pull this one up. So I'm literally just finding that PDF off of my computer and you can see I'm attaching it. Now that I've attached it, I can ask questions about this PDF. This happens to be a relatively short one. It's just a proposal, but I could say, um, who is this proposal for and give me a short summary of what the proposal is about. So I can go ahead and do that. And that's now going to read that PDF. And it came right back up here and said, okay, this proposal is for actionable agency, which is true. Uh, it's from Jonathan Mast of Whitebeard Strategies. That's me. That's true. And then it talks about how we're proposing a consulting engagement to help them become a leader in legal content marketing. It's actually a digital marketing agency that I'm working with, which is all true. So it found all of that information just by me uploading that PDF. I could do the exact same thing with a spreadsheet or anything else. And then I could ask questions of it based upon that. Does that answer your question? Does that make sense?
So yeah, so I would ask. What is it? You call this the?
You'd ask you chat G P T in this case, you would just, you could upload your resume and for example, you could ask it things like, um, I'm applying for a position as such, what, what improvements could I make? What changes should I make? And it will analyze your resume and give you responses back for that. If you wanted to, let's say you had a number of applications and you didn't want to read through all of them. You could literally upload those, those applications. I think you can upload ten at a time right now. Um, you could upload ten of them. You could say, you know, here's the criteria I'm looking for in applicants. Do any of these applications meet the criteria? And it would actually then analyze each of those applications for you and then come back and say, okay, here's the three of them that, that meet your criteria that you want to start with.
Hmm. Okay.
Good question though. Good question. Ray asked, uh, so given any specific tasks, say looking for keywords required for S E O, how would you use the model? Know what model to use. So Ray, as a general rule, you can use any of the models. There are some that are going to do a little bit better than others. When we're talking keywords for S E O, that's one of the few areas where I actually recommend we go over to Google Gemini. And the reason is really simple. It's because it's a Google product and Google has probably more data on search engine optimization than anything else does, but all of the models will work pretty well. So let's just say, for example, uh, to keep things simple that we wanted to pick and we wanted to pick some of the best keywords for our website for, uh, single home rental, a single family rental in Columbus, Ohio. We'll just do that. So, uh, I'm a landlord in Columbus, Ohio. We want to tell it a little information. We should probably start with what it is, but that's all right. Um, I want to learn the top. Let's give it twenty keywords that I should optimize and sorry guys, I cannot type and talk at the same time. It's just one of those things I can't do on my website. So that families looking for single family rentals will find my website. So we can just do that. We'll make it super simple. We're going to give that to chat G P T. I'm going to give the exact same thing to Claude. And by the way, this is one of the nice things about using the free versions is I can give this exact same prompt to all of them. And I'll even go over and do the same thing in perplexity. Just so you can see how it goes. Again, the exact same prompt, in this case, four different things. We can even ask Meta. We'll do it in all five. Uh, and there we go. Wants me to log in. Let's see if it will do that automatically for me. There we go. And here we go. So for chat G P T has said things like Columbus, Ohio, single family rental, family homes for rent in Columbus, Columbus rentals, families. That's great. I could even go so far as to say, please put this in a table with column one containing the keyword and column two, the average monthly search volume. And we'll take that exact same thing and we'll give it to Claude to do. And it may, Claude may not like it because it doesn't have web access. So we'll give the same thing to Gemini. And we'll give the same thing to perplexity. I'm anticipating Claude's going to give us a, a little bit of a fit just because it doesn't have it, but here's an example from uh, chat G P T. And notice sometimes they, oh, it said now interactive, you can actually expand the table over here on the side. Now, in this case, it obviously didn't give us what we want. It didn't give us any value. Sometimes that happens because it doesn't have them. But notice here, we've also got a spreadsheet. We could actually click on this and go right back to and get the spreadsheet directly if we wanted to, like to a Google sheet or something. We can even download that directly. Let's see what Claude did. So Claude gave us a lot of the same key words and it did put it in a table, but it told us, hey, I don't have access to that real-time data. The one thing I like about Claude is it's very candid and transparent with you. Gemini probably does. Nope. It actually gave us the same thing. That's surprising. Normally Gemini will give you that information, but again, very similar type information. One of the nice things about Google is it integrates really well with their Google documents and sheets. So I could literally click on this and export this data directly to a Google sheet. And let's take a look at perplexity. Uh, we'll skip that question here. So it gave us very similar keywords as we can see. Not a surprise. And in this case, it's saying it doesn't have access to real-time search volume. So none of them gave us access to real-time search volume. But at least we had an opportunity to get some keywords and we could actually now compare all of these and figure out what's which, but hopefully you can see from this rate, it's pretty simple to do, and they all give us very similar information. So, um, then you talk about the search engine would be for a marketing webpage for a mom and pop property management company. Okay, this might fit for you then or not, but you could, you could type that data into chat G P T Claude Gemini, whatever. And you're going to get whatever information you're looking for there. So that should be simple across the board. Good question. Good question. So earlier somebody asked about personality and said, hey, we talked in Columbus about if we wanted to do personalities, how would we give our personality to chat G P T or any of the other models? And how do we do that? What personality test do we take? I'm a big proponent of one called sixteen personalities dot com, which I never spell right the first time. Let's try this again. There we go. So you can go to this site. I'll share this link in the chat with everybody if you want. Um, there we go. You can go here and you can take a free personality test. Takes about 10 minutes. It's going to ask you a series of questions. And what's so cool about this is when you're done, it's going to give you your personality type. Uh, and I happen to be in Ian, uh, what am I? I can't remember now. I think it's the, the there we go, E N F P. There we go. Uh, E N T P. So it says that I'm a debater. That's my personality type. I'm curious and flexible and can't resist an intellectual challenge. Most days that's probably true. What's neat though, is that I can go ahead and I can use this code, just the E N T P. And there's a lot of information here about what an E N T P is and chat G P T has even more of that. Now, when I go over to chat G P T or Claude or Gemini, it doesn't matter. Let's say I want to write a memo. So, um, you are an expert memo writer. I need a memo to my tenants about the new trash service. And to let them know that pickup will move from Tuesdays to Thursdays. And that we are also adding recycle. Which I can't spell. There we go. To please draft a memo for me to share with my tenants. And I could ask it to ask me questions, but for the demo here, I don't want to do that. And then I can just put in right in the style of an E N F P. So I'm just going to give it that code. And based on that, now when it writes this memo, it's going to write it in a tone and style that sounds less like A I and more like me. Now you can see here, it actually grabbed my name and everything else. And you may go, Jonathan, how in the world did it know your name? You didn't tell it your name. Because I've been using chat G P T for quite a while, it learns from the chats that I put in and it does what they call memory. It actually saves key aspects. So it knows that what my name is, it knows what my email address is, it knows what my phone number is. And it will fill some of that in as is appropriate as I go through things. So that's a huge help. But now you can see, so it's written this, and again, I could certainly, uh, go through and, and we could read the whole thing. But trust me when I say that this is more in my style than if I picked another style. So we could go back to personality types. And let me grab somebody who's very different, like an I S T P. And we'll now write it in that format. And just say, please rewrite in the tone of, and I gotta look at that. I forgot the code already. That was quick, wasn't it? I S T P. That's the other end of the spectrum for me. So I don't know that as well. I S T P. And all I have to do is give it that. It's going to know that based on that, it's a Myers-Briggs. And I can see just from a quick scan, it's making some changes, nothing huge, but it's making some changes that again, would reflect a different personality. Uh, and so that's one of the best ways that you can do that. You can use any personality test you want. You don't have to use sixteen personalities. You don't have to use Myers-Briggs. If you've done DISC assessments, Colby assessments, anything like that, even a, a strengths finder or something like that, you can use any of those uh, and feed those into chat G P T. It knows a bit about you based on that. The other thing that we can do, and we talked about this briefly in Columbus, is you can give it the name or the information of a famous person or somebody like that to write in their, their context. So let's just say, please rewrite in the tone and style of oh, I'm kind of boring today. Let's try Abraham Lincoln. And now it's changed from, you know, starts with my fellow residents. That sounds like something a president would probably say. In the spirit of progress and community wealth, where I bring forth you an important announcement. Obviously much different style than if we go to the top, what I said, which was hope this finds you well and thriving in your homes. I'm excited to share some great news. Yeah, very, again, same message, but different tone and style. Does anybody have somebody that might be totally off the wall? I'm, I'm not really up on cultural stuff, so I probably don't have any. But anybody, anybody have somebody you want me to try? Did you see an example?
Yeah, that comedian.
Yeah, that comedian, the one who did Miss Doubtfire.
Oh, Robin Williams.
Yes.
So we'll do that. And what was it? Robin Williams? And we'll say with humor. And here we go. Let's see. Hello, wonderful tenants. I hope you're all having a fantastic day because I've got exciting news to jazz up your trash tastic routines. Hold on to your bins, folks. Starting next week, our trash day is moving from Tuesday to Thursday. Yes, you heard that, right? No more dragging those bins out early in the week. Now you get to do it later on Thursday. Just be sure to roll your bins out Wednesday night so they're ready for the big show. But wait, there's more. And again, you can see all that. And again, it's a different style, same information, but a different style, a different tone. And one of the things I really encourage you to do is, as you're getting started and using A I is try different people out. You know, I may go and say, you know, uh, let's say, please write in the tone and style. Uh, now I don't care what you think of them. I'm not being political, but I bet we're going to get an interesting message and we tell it to speak in the tone of Donald Trump. Let's find out. Yeah, that, does that sound like him or what? Tremendous update. Yes, of course. Everything's tremendous. Uh, and again, just very, very different. I love this. Yeah, some big news, huge, really huge about our trash and recycling. Again, I don't care what you think of him, but again, a different tone, a different style. Uh, and you can do that on anything you want. As you start playing around with this, when you change that name, especially on a memo like this, that you keep the same all the time, you will find some of those styles or some of those people that resonate with you. And as a result, you can then use their names in the future when you're writing things and it will write more in their tone and style. The other thing you can do on this, and we didn't have time to talk about this the other day, but let's start a new chat here a minute. And let's just say, I want to create a tone and style command for me that I can share with chat G P T to have it mimic my tone and style. I'm not sure where to start. Please interview me asking one question at a time and allowing me to respond. And then repeat until you have enough information to create a tone and style command for, let's say that reflects me. So you made me go, hang on, what are we doing? Well, literally chat G P T is going to interview us now and ask us questions. So question one, how would you describe your overall tone when communicating with your audience? Are you formal, casual, authoritative? I'd probably say I'm friendly and confident. Now, if it listened right, it's now going to, yeah, there we go. Now it's going to ask us question two, but it's going to remember these. So when you communicate complexities, do you prefer to explain them? Use analogies, step by step storytelling? I'm going to say analogies and storytelling. And again, you might put in something different and it might ask you slightly different questions. We'll go through four or five of them, just see how this works. How would you like your audience to feel after reading your content? I want them to feel motivated. Oops, I can't spell mote evaded and happy. Question four, can you example a phrase or sentence I typically use to encourage you? Uh, let's go. That's not one I use, but that's what first came to mind. Uh, what kind of language? Simple and straightforward. How do you handle addressing potential concerns? Uh, I generally do it with reassurance and empathy with a dose of humor. If appropriate. Okay. And now I'm going to say enough questions. Give me my tone and style command, please. Yes, I say please. It's just part of what I do. There we go. Notice it listened. It now broke. It probably would have asked me more questions. And now it's giving me this. And now I can say, please put this into a command that I can add to a prompt and simply copy paste into a new prompt on chat G P T. And it should summarize that and make it a little bit bigger, still gonna or smaller. This case, it's still got a lot, but that's all right. So what I can do now at this point is I can literally assuming I, I like this. I literally can copy this to my clipboard. And now when I go start a new chat, let's go over and we'll just show you how this could work in Claude. Write a memo to my tenants about a change in trash service from Tuesdays to Thursdays. Use this tone and style and I'll just paste it in. And notice it talked about things, different things. So, hey, awesome tenants. Uh, and again, it's now picked that up. I can now do it, say do this in the exact opposite tone and style. And we should get a quite different one. Yeah. So notice this was more friendly. We can see that as we read through it. This next one not nearly so, sounds more like it was written by a bureaucrat, you know, they like notices. Uh, so again, different ways to do that. We could spend a lot of time. I don't want to go through that. Um, but Deborah asked a really good question. Could we copy and paste this into a word document? Yes, you can put it in any type of note that you have. And then you can use that repeatedly. So I can go to, I can use it a month from now, a day from now, anything like that. I can use that tone and style. So I would encourage you to again, take ten minutes, let chat G P T interview you, have it give you that. And then you're going to now have that available. Put it in a word doc. I use, if you have a note taking app, you can use it there. And then it's available to you anytime you're writing something that you can paste that in and it's going to be appropriate for you based upon that. So great question. Uh, Sandy had a good idea. She said, how about Samuel L. Jackson? That could be fun. Rewrite in the tone and style of a, let's say of a frustrated Samuel L. Jackson. Just because I watched the movie with him the other day and he was frustrated in the movie. Okay, I'm not going to read this one, guys. You can read it yourself. Thankfully, we're all adults here, but you can see a bit different style again, uh, based on what we, what we're talking about. So, uh, Sandy, there you go. Um, very, very different. All right. So again, tone and style is really important. And the reason I'm spending so much time on this, you may be going, Jonathan, you're beating a dead horse here. The reason I'm spending so much time on tone and style is that when you teach A I your tone and style and you save that, that, that's that command over to a word document or wherever. Now every time you're creating content for your tenants, you can make and maintain that same tone and style. And that's important because it will sound more like you and less like A I every step of the way. So that's why I really wanted you guys to go through that. So good questions, good questions across the board. So we've went over the basics on the model. We went over the basics of how to set your tone and styling. And I'd encourage you guys each to go ahead and do that interview. Let me go ahead and actually give you that prompt that I did, just so that, uh, in case you want to use that, you may use that prompt. Not saying it's perfect, but I'm going to put it over in chat. So you've got that. Uh, you can copy and paste that. Oops, that was just a Deborah. I meant to send it to everybody. Hang on. There we go. So then you can go ahead and use that and you can paste that. Again, you could do that with Claude. You could do that with Gemini. You could do that with Meta. Any one of those across the board, it would be just fine. So.
But once you copy and paste it, where are you putting it? Where are you saving it to?
Um, so I save mine. I use Evernote, which is a note taking app. And I just save it there. And then anytime I want it, I go ahead and grab it and copy and paste it back into chat G P T. But you could save it as a, a word document. Um, if you've got a clipboard manager, you could save it to your clipboard and use it that way. Whatever is convenient for you based on how you work would be just fine. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So once you log off, I, I still can get back on here and it'll be there or have to do it now?
No, you, you, it'll, it'll, it'll be in your history. What happens over time. So notice just today while we've been here. Uh, all these, each one of these on the left are separate chats that we've done. So I can go back to one that I did earlier today. Um, so I wanted to create a newsletter, a post for my newsletter, which I didn't even do yet. So I'm glad we did this. So I wanted to create a, a post that would encourage people to sign up for my newsletter. So I got my next issue coming out tomorrow. So I'll show you what I did here. Super simple. And again, it always keeps your history. So that's where welcome Abdallah. Glad to see you're here. Just joined in. We'll have the replay if you want to catch up. So in this case, I, again, I publish a newsletter. Maybe you guys publish a newsletter to your tenants. You want to make sure they sign up. And I said, I need your help creating a social media post to create FOMO. FOMO, by the way, stands for fear of missing out for my readers about signing up for my A I prompting insider newsletter. Last week was the inaugural issue and tomorrow is the next. I want to create FOMO and encourage people to sign up before they miss out on more A I tips, ideas and savings. And then please ask me for any clarification questions you need. Since it's got a couple of questions, what are the A I tips? What are any teasers? Do I want to include any testimonials? Specific platform, specific call to action. I gave it the answers. I actually gave it an entire copy of the newsletter last week for it to reference. That's why this is so long. Hang on here a minute. We'll scroll. You can see I gave it a lot. All this is information I gave it. And then based upon that, it created, don't miss out on our next issue of A I prompting insider. Last week's inaugural issue of A I prompting was a hit. And we've got that. So now literally, if I want to, I can take this. And let's do this just to show you how it can work. I can go over to Facebook. Oops. That one's busy. That window is busy. I'm going to go over to just my profile. I can go and paste, space, paste that in. Let's go ahead and we're going to go back and grab the other part. Again, I can just literally copy and paste this. Go back to Facebook here. And I get to paste that in. No, it brings everything over. Couple of things that maybe I don't want when I want to take a look at it. So get ready for A I prompting tips, A I prompt chain of the week. Um, yeah, I don't, we're not going to talk about that. So we'll, instead of predicting it, I haven't written it yet. So I don't know what I want to tell them it's going to be because that might be dangerous because I haven't written it yet. Or the latest A I news and tips. Uh, this is a chance to elevate your A I game. That sounds cheesy. I want to get rid of that. By the way, you should always edit things before you post them. Because sometimes they are going to sound a little cheesy. It's easy to do that. So don't wait. Ensure you want to subscribe to the A I prompting insider, uh, community today. So I'm going to go ahead now and just grab that. I've got that link saved. So I'm going to just grab that link from my, there we go. There's the link. And it's going to then pop up a preview of this. In theory, there we go. It's going to come up sooner or later, but I can now take this and boom, paste it, paste it out to my different pages. And just like that, I've used A I to write a social media post to help me out. This is something I, again, I did earlier and I just totally forgot to do. So this was a good example. And then I can post that. And in theory, when I come back, it'll actually show the picture, uh, that will show up there. And hopefully we'll get a few people to sign up for my A I prompting newsletter as a result of that. So simple, easy ways to do that. It's another good example. Uh, if you guys have, you know, any information you're sharing with tenants, it's great to use that for as well. Anything across the board there. So good questions. Um, excellent. Any other questions that I can answer for you related to tone, related to style, related to history? Again, your history is going to always be over here on the left. You can click on any point in time and you can go back. It goes back a long ways. You can see I've got a lot of stuff and it keeps populating here. I get to the bottom. I've got thousands of prompts in here. I won't go through them all, but I can go back to any one of those anytime that I want. Uh, and pick that. So I could say, you know, uh, I want to see what this one, or I can literally go back and see what that was that I did. This was a, a social media post that I wrote probably two weeks ago. So all of that's over in your history. Anytime you want to get access to it, you can click over there and see that. So is there a best practice prompt list? So, um, not necessarily. I don't actually recommend keeping a bunch of prompts, but what I do recommend doing is using what we call the prompting framework. And let me share that with you guys real quick. So that you guys have got that. This is four steps to create what I call the perfect prompt. And I'm going to go ahead and share this over in the chat as well. So you see it in the Zoom chat if you want. And what we're going to do is we're going to, whenever we create a prompt, if you want to get the best possible responses, you don't have to do this every time. But if you want to get the best responses, if you follow these four steps, one prompt that follows these four steps, you're going to get the best responses. I've been trying again. Prompts done thousands and thousands, probably tens of thousands of prompts. And this is a great way to do it. And the first step is I'm going to tell chat G P T what type of expert it should act as. Then I'm going to give it some background information. Then I'm going to ask it the question that I have. And then the fourth part, probably the most important in my mind is I'm going to tell it to ask me clarifying questions. In other words, basically I'm going to say, if I forgot to tell you something that you need to know in order to give me the best answer, please go ahead and ask me so that I can give you that information. And what's really cool about this is let's say that I want to write a prompt and I'm, I'm stumped. I don't know where to start. So oops, get that. Facebook keeps taking over occasionally. Let me go back to chat G P T. So let me go back here and let's just say, I want to create a prompt to help me write a monthly newsletter to my tenants. I, uh, I, I need a prompt following the perfect prompting framework, which is what I call this. And then I'm just going to put that in there. And then at the end of it, we're going to say, please create this prompt for me. And in theory, it's now going to give us a prompt that we could give to chat G P T following that format to write our newsletter. So let's see if, how accurate this is. So it says, act as an experienced property manager and communication specialist who's skilled at crafting engaging and informative newsletters. Well, that's exactly what we wanted to do. So when we're telling it how to act, that's great. Then it says, I manage several rental properties in need to send a monthly newsletter to my tenants. The purpose of the newsletter is to keep them informed about important updates, maintenance schedules, community events and tips for better living. Notice it's made some assumptions here, so you could change that. My tenants appreciate clear, concise and friendly communication. The newsletter should be engaging, provide valuable information and foster a sense of community. Then ask your questions. Can you help me write a draft for this month's newsletters? This month's newsletter should include the following sections. Welcome. Update on upcoming maintenance, information about community events, seasonal tips for maintaining their homes and a reminder about rent payment procedures. And then please ask me any clarifying questions. I can now take this whole thing, copy it into a new chat. I paste it in and I'm just going to get rid of the titles because I don't need the titles at this point in time. And we'll leave that in place. That's fine. So now what we've basically done is we've said this one prompt, given it all that information. In this case, let's see what assumptions it makes. We could give it more specific information and get a better version, but now it wants to ask us some questions, specific dates, details about the community event, specific tips and preferred method of rent payment. Notice it thinks it needs more information to write a better response there and it would. I'm not going to do that. I was just going to say skip for our purposes here. This means it is going to make some assumptions and it's important for you to know that. But just based upon that, again, we started by asking it to give us a prompt and now we're putting that prompt in. It's going to actually write a newsletter. And in this case, it's made up dates and it's made up inspections. You could change that obviously, or if you'd answered its questions, it would have incorporated that indirectly. So the best way to create a prompt and the best practice in my mind for prompts, instead of keeping a list of prompts that you want to use, is just save that perfect prompt framework. And then utilize that anytime you have a question, if you follow those four steps, put it into a prompt. Excuse me, you're going to end up with a really high quality response that you can utilize. So hopefully that makes sense in the, in the process. Great question. What other questions can I help you guys out with? What other things would you like to see? Or do you wonder about how to do? This is all for you guys. So feel free to ask.
Jonathan, uh, this is the dollar first. I, I want to ask you if you're doing a tenant screening for someone who's moving across state lines and you want to get some background on them in terms of the bankruptcy record or any alimony. any alimony they're receiving or either legal in the country. Can GPT do that?
Great question. The answer is probably not. And that's because most of those records are not going to be publicly available. Or at least not publicly available on the internet. So I'm probably not going to be able to get any of that information. I could use perplexity being a search engine. And I could ask it some of those questions. And I, if it's available on a website somewhere, perplexity would likely find that. Uh, but again, it's going to depend on the information. So your bankruptcies, your alimony, certainly your alimony, child support, things like that. To the best of my knowledge, it may list that somebody's had a bankruptcy, but it's not going to list a lot, probably a lot of details online due to privacy. So unlikely that AI is going to be able to help you with those specific questions, Adolphus. Just because I don't think you're going to be able to find that information publicly available online.
He can, he can find it on, but you have to buy it. You can do it free, but it's called Truth Finder.
Okay.
I do will tell you all that bankruptcy and you know, all this and that.
And Ray just added pacer.gov is a site you can go to check out for bankruptcies as well. Uh, so there are the, Adolphus, there are a number of sites out there that sell that information. So I do know it's possible to get. But AI itself uh, is not going to have that specific information. One of the things that's important to take a look at is, is training dates. So let's just ask it, what is your most recent training date? So all AI models are trained through a specific time point. So in this case, chat GPT is trained only through October of twenty twenty-three. That means if something happened at Christmas the last year, it's not going to know about it. Because it's not been trained on that data yet. Um, let's ask the same for Claude. I haven't done this in a while and it, by the way, these, these things do update all the time. So Claude was updated. Mind you, this is the brand new version just released today. So it makes sense. Through April of twenty twenty-four. So it would in theory know about events that happened last Christmas. Now let's ask Gemini. Gemini is occasionally cantankerous. Yeah. And it's, here's one. So it says, I'm not going to tell you basically because I'm constantly being updated. So uh, spoken like a true politician. And let's just see if I can do perplexity may not give it because it's a search engine. Yeah, that makes sense for perplexity because it's actually going out and searching things uh, all the time. So that makes perfect sense that it's not necessarily going to have that. Good question though, Adolphus. Sorry, we can, yes, another question. Go ahead.
Yeah, Jonathan, uh, yeah, lots of questions, but the thing that's burning me right now is uh, rent comps. I'm trying to raise my rents. How do I do a market search to do rent comps in my area? Uh, how would I get, go about that? Like the different apartments or?
Yeah, I would start with perplexity. I'm not sure it's going to have all the information we need, but uh, let's just, let's try it here a minute. So I'm looking for rent comps. What city and state are we in, Dave?
Uh, Mishawaka, Indiana.
I'm definitely going to misspell that.
You, you did good.
Good enough, right?
Yeah.
Uh, for what? How many bedrooms and baths?
Uh, one bedroom, one bath.
Apartment or home?
Apartment.
Let's see what it can tell us.
Yeah.
It may, it may or may not do it. So it's literally the nice thing about perplexity. And this is one of the things I like it. It's actually going to go out and look to see if it can find this data on any publicly available sites. So it has. And what's neat here, it's actually going to show me here where it's found this. So it's went to a site called Rent Cafe. A site called rent.com and another one called Zumper.
Right.
And based upon that, I don't know if this makes sense, but it's saying the average rent in Mishawaka ranges from nine hundred and fifty to a thousand fifty-nine per month.
Yeah.
Uh, low end, there are some that was available starting as low as seven hundred. On the high end, prices can go up to around a thousand fifty-nine or higher, depending on location and amenities. And then it gives you some examples. So on Addison on Main, it found a one bedroom apartment for nine twenty-seven. Elevate on Main found one available, but specific price is not mentioned. Uh, square footage uh, in Mishawaka was around on average six hundred and eighty-four square feet for a one bedroom, one bath. Uh, says there are numerous that are available that can at least tell you, you know, how, if the market's tight, obviously you can charge more money. Uh, it said apartments dot coms lists four hundred and three currently available. Rent Cafe shows seventy-five, Apartment Guide says thirty-four. Uh, and the overall rent for apartments, including Mishawaka is eleven hundred and five dollars a month. Um, slightly below average than in Mishawaka. So is that information helpful to you?
Yeah, that is. Obviously, uh, adding some more critique, you know, what kind of amenities and whatnot would pre, uh, you know, probably help out on that, but that's, uh, yeah.
Sure. So let's just say, for example, um, I, there's a guy from my church I just talked to that he lives in a studio apartment. Kind of down on his luck right now and his apartment includes electricity. So I could say, what about if we pay for utilities? How would that impact average rents? And again, what's nice here is it's actually going to go out. Now notice it, this is how, I love it. This is how smart it is. What utilities? Electricity, water, and let's just say trash. And it found eight sources. And based on that, it said that you might expect the base rent to be ru- reduced, um, if they're not included, basically. Uh, and they're telling you what to budget. So they're saying you should probably budget forty to seventy a month for electric. Forty to sixty a month for water and fifteen to thirty a month for trash. Therefore, a total of charge of about ninety-five to a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty dollars. So again, perfect. No, but what's neat about this is again, it's giving us links. So if I'm curious about, for example, where did it come up with water at this rate? I can actually go look. And it's coming from this site. I can click on it. It will now actually open up this site. And it'll show me this was just written June seventeen to twenty twenty-four. So it's going to be accurate. And then it's, we just need to determine is it accurate from Mishawaka or not? So it's, if it's publicly available on the internet, so if it's something that would show up in a Google search, then you can go ahead and look at it and, and get that data. If it's behind any type of a paywall or anything like that, or a login, then you're not typically going to be able to use AI to access that information. When that happens though, what I find works in most cases, if it's a, like a subscription site that you log into, typically at that point in time, you'll have the opportunity to actually download data from that site. And if I download data from that site, I can upload that to any of the AI models. Excuse me, got the hiccups here. I can upload that to any of the AI models and have it analyze that data. So if I add a, a spreadsheet that, you know, the local real estate board put out or the local, um, you know, ROPA put out or something like that, I could upload that directly into AI to get my answers for that. Great questions. We've got a bit more time. Does anybody else have any other questions or things you'd like to know? Dave, you mentioned you had a bundle. If you want, feel free to ask another.
Yeah, um, I'll see, uh, well, I've got a bunch, like leases. Uh, I need to update my leases for Indiana.
So you wanted to, what I would do then is I would upload your existing li- lease as a PDF.
Okay.
And then I would basically say, I need to update this for the state of Indiana. Um, please provide me with recommendations on how to do this. So I'll give you a, a quick example and uh, my wife is in the process of selling the company that she owns. And uh, she had just this morning sent me the purchase agreement and said, hey, or the purchase contract. What do you think? Can you proofread it? I did read it over, but I also uploaded it to chat GPT. And I asked it to give us recommendations that would minimize or mitigate her liability as part of the sale. And were there any things I should be careful of? And it actually identified a couple of things that I may or may not have caught as it read through the agreement that were really helpful because then it helped me focus in on those specific things and answer those specifically. Robert and Sharon, you guys raised your hand. What question can we answer for you guys? You have to unmute yourself. There we go.
Yep. Okay. I was going to say, let me take myself off mute. So this
There we go.
This doesn't pertain specifically to um, rental property per se, but investment such as REITs or other investments. But will any of the AI platforms look at publicly available corporate financial data such as like a ten K or a ten Q?
So again, in most, in most cases, you're going to prob, you're either going to have to give it a link directly to that ten K or that document. Or you'll have to download it and upload it to that. But yes, if that data is available, they can analyze it and they can go through that. So if you've got a uh, you know, any type of report like that, a PDF spreadsheet, however, that ten K is available, absolutely you can, can use that. And if it's, if it's something that it can find by giving it a URL, that's great. If it's not, then you can go ahead and just download it and attach it and it would go ahead and analyze it.
So, so I would download that if it was a PDF on the corporate website, I would, I would load that to the, you know, perplexity chat GPT.
You just, you'd literally click on this paper clip right here and go upload from computer. Oh, great question. Yep. Upload from computer. And then again, I can find any file that I've got out there and I can analyze that. So um, you know, let's just say I, let's go take a quick look here. Um, find, we'll do this in Google. Um, spreadsheet. Or CSV of rents across the US. And let's see if I can find any that'll give that to me. There we go. Show results with spreadsheet. So this is St. Louis. And I could download one of these reports. I could upload that data or multiple points of data to chat GPT and then have it use that and give us analysis based on that.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Abdallah, you had a question? You want to unmute yourself? What do you, what can I answer for you?
Hi Jonathan, this is actually Mahalit. Um,
Oh, hello. I remember meeting you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. So um, I'm so happy to be here. Um, my question is, I don't know where to start. Like, do I have to get some kind of app? I just downloaded this uh, G, chat GPT. Um, is there any, you can recommend me like what exactly? I'm, I'm from scratch. I don't know where to start.
Well, the place to start, I think first is chat GPT because it's easiest to go to. Uh, let me see if we can look at the App Store a minute here. I'm going to, it's probably going to pull up the Apple App Store, but let's just see if we can see it on the computer. I know I can on my phone. Uh, let's see here. Open note in the app. Let's see if it will do that here. Okay, I've got to change my screen here. Let me change my share real quick, everybody. Share and App Store. So there we go. So now I'm in the App Store and if I type in chat GPT. You're going to see, okay, this is, I'm glad we did this. It's a great question to ask. So you can see when I type in chat GPT, we've got a lot of things that pop up. There's six of them that pop up here and I haven't even kept scrolling lots more. And all these look like they could be chat GPT. It's even confusing to me as I look at it because I'm like, oh my gosh, which one of these is chat GPT? And they're very confusing because if you guys were with us the beginning, and I know some of you joined later, I said, you want to use the one that's built by OpenAI. Notice what this top one says. Built on OpenAI. That doesn't mean it was built by OpenAI. So that's not the one that you want. Then this one says powered by chat GPT. That's not the one that we want. Powered by chat GPT. That's not the one we want. This isn't the one we want. That's not the one we want. That's not the one we want. I'm on a desktop. So to be fair, it's not going to show you one for the desktop because they don't have a desktop app. Uh, so, but if I'm on my phone, notice as we go down, there's six, and then if I count here, seven, eight, nine, ten, at least eleven, twelve, not cap, got eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. We're, we're, we're still going eighteen plus. And notice they all look really similar. They're all using an icon that looks a lot. And by the way, out of those eighteen, not one of those is the chat GPT app. So you want to be careful when you do that. Let me see if I can join in on Zoom on my phone and I'll show you what it looks like. I may be able to do that here. Let's find out. So to answer your question, while I'm pulling up the App Store, you absolutely can use chat GPT through your browser. And that's what I would recommend. In this case, start by using it right through your browser. And that's going to give you the best experience overall. So when I go over here, chat GPT, you're literally just going to go to chat GPT dot com. And when you're getting started, I don't recommend you pay for any of the services. Ultimately, you're probably going to spend twenty dollars a month for a couple of them. But when you're getting started, play around with chat, play around with Claude, play around with Gemini and perplexity. They all cost twenty bucks a month, just for the record. And you can find the ones that you like the best. And then when you run out of usage, you can utilize that to go ahead and get more usage. I'm going to see if I can, again, if I can log in on my phone. If I can, then we'll go ahead and I'll share that screen. And we'll share the App Store. So you guys can see what that looks like. All right. We're going to turn off audio. Stay a participant. No, it may not let me do that. Let's see here. Sorry folks, this is, sometimes we try things and they don't work out as much as we want them to. Share. No, only host can share. Let me see if I can fix that. Go. Now let me try this again. Share. Nope. It's not going to let me do it. So to answer your question, yes, you can use it on a browser. You can use it in an app. Just be careful and know if it's any more than twenty dollars, you're absolutely the wrong one because that's all they charge is twenty dollars a month. So great questions. Anybody else got any questions? Anything else that we can show you or something you're wondering? How would I do this? Yes, go ahead.
So what's the, the game changer of learning this?
Saving time. More than anything else, it's the ability to save time. So um, for example, today, uh, I showed you earlier that proposal. I had written a proposal for that client about a week ago. They called back today and they're like, we're ready to move forward, but we want a couple of changes made. They wanted to, to change the way it was set up. I literally uploaded last week's proposal, which I used AI to help me write. And I said, the client wants these changes. Please rewrite the proposal for me. And it did. And then I copy and pasted it into a word document, sent it over to the client and they signed the paperwork. So that, for example, would have probably taken me an hour, two years ago. Uh, or a year ago before AI. And I did that entire update with everything in probably about ten minutes. So it saved me, you know, forty-five to fifty minutes of my day and allowed me to get more done. So that in my mind is the real game changer, is identifying things that, that you can do much faster. Uh, and therefore save time. That obviously if we save time, we're increasing our profits. And in many cases, because it's so good with communications of on, I think that it's really important to help us do a better job of communicating with our tenants too. Because it's that much easier to communicate with them now because we have the ability to create memos, to create newsletters, to create emails much, much easier and more expeditiously. So does that make sense?
Yes.
Good. Adolphus, I see you unmuted yourself. Have you got a question for us?
Yes. Uh, if I had a feedback on Robert's um, question about REITs. How do we find uh, REITs that have been held their value consistently, let's say for five years and consistently paid out their, their dividends? Um, and which could be the best amongst the REITs?
I have no idea. So let's ask perplexity. How would I, help me out with this, Adolphus? I do this, I identify.
REITs that have held value over five years. And consistently paid out their earnings to the shareholders.
Let's find out. So again, the benefit of perplexity over um, Google is it's actually going to go and look at this. It's even looking at some things like bank rate, Kiplinger dividend and all that. And then it's coming up and giving us some recommendations. So total return over five years measures. That's all great. Here are some steps to identify them. Uh, use financial websites or stock screeners to filter REITs based upon that. Review the dividend history, consider sector factors. So it's going to give us some advice, but it's, it probably doesn't have that information. In other words, most of that's probably, especially in this type of stuff with dividend history, it's probably a lot of that's either behind a paywall or some sort of a login. So they're not going to be able to pull that directly. But they are going to give you some information on where you could look for that.
Thank you.
No, good question. And that's probably one of the biggest things to to and it takes some time to learn is. A I is amazing in what it can do, but it can only access essentially public data or data that you upload to it. So let's say you I see Kiplingers is one of these, and I know Kiplinger at least used to, when my dad got it years ago, used to put out lots of reports. And if they'd put out a report on REITs like that, you could literally, even if it came in paper, you could take pictures of it with your phone. And you could go ahead and upload that and utilize it to analyze that data. So even if you don't have it, you know, um, I could grab. Let me see here a minute. I'm gonna grab a book from behind me. No specific book, uh, the secrets of dynamic communication. I don't know anything about this book. I haven't read it. It's just one that I have that I haven't read. I'm gonna use my phone here a minute. You guys can't see that. But I'm gonna go ahead and take a picture. Of this of a page in the book. There we go. I'm gonna log into chat G P T on my phone and then I'll be able to see it on the screen here in just a minute. I'm gonna upload that image. Of that page that I took. There it is. And I'm gonna say please. Transcribe. All right. So while it's doing that, I'm gonna go back to chat G P T. And it's gonna be thinking a minute and it will get updated here in just a second. Let's reload and see if it's there. Okay, so now you guys can see there's a picture I took with my phone of the book. You can see it's not even a great picture and it's got a bunch of stuff over here. And let's see how it did. It said, speaking with reason. That's the title right up there. If you guys can zoom in, you can see it's that's what was the top. And then it started with include such a story or illustration. Let's see. And there it is. It grabbed it. So it pulled all of that text out of that book. Page just based upon me taking a picture. Of that. So imagine that you're someplace and you're looking at a report and you can take a picture of it with your phone. You can then upload that to chat G P T or to Claude or to Gemini. And it can evaluate that now that I have that text, I don't need the page anymore. I could copy and paste this with ten other pages. And use that data and have it analyze that as well. So that that they call that vision. It's a feature that's available with chat G P T with Gemini and with Claude. And that can definitely help out. You can even take pictures of a property. Uh, and it can help you identify aspects of that. It's not gonna be perfect, although it's getting very, very good. Uh, at doing those types of things. So um, I could again do that just by taking pictures and uploading them. Excuse me. That did that make sense on the question?
Uh, John, you say you could take a picture of a property and what now? What would you do?
You you could upload it just like I did here. And then you could have it. You could tell it, you know, based upon this, what can you tell me about this property? What, you know, and you could add give it different perspectives. Again, depending on the pictures, it it may, you know. Impact what it can do. Let me see as an example. So we've got. My wife and I have our house for sale. Let me create a new chat here a minute. Let's try this. And again, I'm not gonna say this is gonna be amazing. I'm just gonna grab a couple of photos here. So let's see, here's one.
Can you do videos too?
Uh, no, it won't be able to analyze a video yet, although they have a new version coming out. And that new version coming out can analyze video.
Like say my grandson's batting batting swing, evaluate what's good and what's bad.
It it we're probably a month away from being able to do that. Yeah, literally. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna do the same thing. So I've got the pictures on my phone. So I'm saying, please tell me about this property based on the pictures.
Yeah.
Now. These photos I'm uploading are not necessarily gonna be amazing or anything else, but let's go ahead and reload and I'll show you now what I just did. So here's the new chat. So I uploaded three photos. There's a picture of the back of our house. There's a picture of our barn with my tractor sitting in front of it. And there's a picture of a very common sight in our backyard deer. So. It gave me an error. Let's try again. By the way, when the server gets busy, which does happen, uh, then you can absolutely get errors. So. Let's see what it told us. I, by the way, guys, this is I'm doing this raw here. I have no idea what we're gonna get. So. Uh, this property depicted in the photo is a spacious and serene rural estate with several notable features. Main house. Houses large two-story structure with substantial deck on the upper level, providing ample outdoor living space and a beautiful view of the surrounding greenery. The exterior is clad in neutral colored siding, complemented by a red shingled roof and a stone chimney, giving a rustic and homey feel. The lower level has multiple large windows allowing for natural light, direct access to the garden area. So it got that based on that photo.
Wow.
Now, good news is everything it said was pretty much right. Let's see what it did in the next part. So this is barn or shed. There's a sizable barn or shed on the property. Constructed with wooden paneling and a metal roof. The vibrant red tractor parked in front of the barn indicating that the property is likely equipped for agricultural activities or maintenance of large grounds. The area around the barn is well maintained. That's good because I need to mow it. They haven't seen that. With a gravel driveway leading up to it and young trees planted nearby suggesting recent landscaping efforts. Here's that picture. Those young trees, by the way, are the orchard that my wife and I planted last summer. So it picked up a lot of details out of that. And is it all perfect? No, but for example, notice it wasn't sure if it was a barn or a shed, but it figured it was wood siding, which it is, and a metal roof. Just based upon that image. And then the third one was of the deer. Let's see, it says natural surroundings. The property is surrounded by lush greenery, including mature trees and well-kept grassy areas, which contribute to peaceful and secluded environment. A pond is also visible, providing natural habitat for wildlife, as evidenced by the presence of deer near the water. Your overall landscape is vibrant and healthy, reflecting a well-kept for environment and creates natural beauty and functional living. I need to give this to my real estate agent because this is better than what he wrote. Okay, um, but it's just an example. Of what it can do. Now, is it making some assumptions? Absolutely it is. But hopefully, uh, it is allowing you to to add some value there. Uh, Ray pointed out that Home Snap allows you to take a pic and will give you an address and info on the place. That's really cool, Ray. Good to know. So none of these are street facing, so it probably would have a hard time with that. But if you can do a street facing photo. So they're absolutely getting to that point based on Google's GPS maps and all that, that they can grab that information. So as you can see, there's just a good example. Um, those pictures were taken for our listing. There was no plan to to do this, but you can see how what type of stuff it can do. All right, um, Adolphus, you've got your hand raised. What can I answer for you?
Yeah. If I were to use your example, let's say I was looking at a property out here where I live in New Jersey. And just took a picture of the building and 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 put in an address of the building. Would it give me the details of the interior or any history of it?
Probably not, because most of that's gonna be on a uh, your site you're gonna have to take a look at, but let's 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 do a test. So let's go out and I'll test it on my house. So what can you tell me about the property? And home at thirty eight eighty eight. Wisteria. Of Fremont, Michigan. So let's see if it's able to find anything. So it's looking at Zillow. It actually found two listings on Zillow, found one on Trulia, found one on Realtor and some more. Uh, so notice it grabbed photos from the last time the house was for sale. It's actually got our current. Oh, these are current photos. So uh, this is a photo, for example, that just went up a week ago. Because that's our current listing right there. We're keeping five acres. Uh, so that shows you how that came from Redfin. Uh, property is currently listed for sale for five hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. That's correct. It's a twenty four acre lot. That's also true. Uh, single family home was built in nineteen eighty nine, four bedrooms, three baths, total living space of twenty eight hundred and thirty. So I don't know if that's exactly what you're looking for, but. Not bad for just a quick Google search, uh, giving it an address.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So if I wanted to find out uh, value add apartments, um. You know, to search for owners or a potential, uh, like say an owner that had property. Ownership for ten years or something. Would that be? How would I?
Probably. It's probably not gonna have that type of information just because it it giving it here. I can see from a follow up if there's anything. Um, let's see here. See, I'll tell.
Yeah, if a property was listed and it didn't sell, it would be it'd be on the market that way.
Yeah. So yeah, so in this case, you know, it found out that the property was listed on June five, which is true. Uh, so it's been up there for fifteen days, which is accurate. I'd have to it'd have to do some testing on that one, Dave. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But if the data is available, it can analyze it. That's the good news. Notice here it did something wrong because that is not a picture of my house. I don't know where that came from. Um, but that doesn't mess with these are. So all right, Abdullah's phone has a question. What can we do for you?
Uh, Jonathan, so I'm trying to furnish my first one. I'm trying to furnish this property. If I give you the address. Um, will you? Do you know how to compare it with other prices, with other neighborhood? I tried to do that and I can't.
We can try. We can try again depending what's the address of the property.
Yeah, it's two 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 seven. Um, uh, Whitney Place. Kettering, Ohio.
Uh, Kettering, you said?
Yeah, Kettering, Ohio. So I'm trying to do.
What what did we want to do? We wanted to do like a uh, compare the rents on that or what 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 question should we ask about that?
Um, so I'm trying to do the long term or the short term. I'm trying to uh, do that. The furnished. Uh, property rentals.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's give me rent suggestions.
Furnished, yeah, furnished homes.
Or furnished.
I think they call that midterm.
Midterm. So yeah, thank you.
Mid midterm homes, you said, or?
Mid midterm rentals.
Yeah, midterm.
Okay.
It's a three bedroom, one bath. So I don't know if that makes.
Oh, we probably should have added that in. That's right. We can do that.
Oh, okay.
So now it 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 found one in Dayton. I don't know if that's the same. Is that the same? Well, you can look at it is is. Okay. Um, so it identified. The house it found is a two-bedroom, one bathroom. So that's different. Uh, so let's just say.
They call it two, but it's three. It's three bedroom, but they call it two. I don't know why.
Three bedroom. How many baths?
One bath. And it's all fenced. It's quiet area. It's in a great location.
So we're asking you some additional information. It's updated it to now say, okay, it's a three-bedroom, one house. Said the medium rent median rent in Kettering is about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for three bedrooms. Uh, it could be higher. Um. Compare results that found a three-bedroom in Kettering for fourteen hundred to two thousand seventy five per month. Um, just giving you some different factors. So. I don't know if that's helpful. It's not necessarily giving you exactly what you want, but it's giving you some relevant information that it can find. Based upon that. Looks like overall fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Great. Guys, we've got about five minutes left. Is there any other questions I can answer for you? This is a this is great. Good question so far.
The uh, the uh, logging in on the seventy five, uh, the training that you have there videos, that's geared to go through those one at a time down the. Down the.
So let me log in here a minute. Actually, I'll change my window here a minute so I can get. And show that to you guys. We just get logged in here real quick. So yeah, to answer your question though, Dave, yes, you can go through the courses in any order that you want. Uh, or the lessons in the course. There is no right or wrong uh, in that whatsoever. And.
Okay.
I'm in the backend, so I'll just show you what I've got here. It won't be quite the same, but it'll be similar. Share. So you can see here's all the courses. So you've got a whole outline here of everything that's available. You can go through those in any order that you want. Uh, what you will see when you log in is going to look more like. This here. Uh, and actually, I don't think I'm logged into the course. So it may give me an error here, but let's try. Yep, I'm not logged into the course. So you would normally get into the course and then I apologize, I'm not logged into it, but that's how you would you would then see that. If you get to another page. Notice there's nine dots up here in the menu. You click on those nine dots and click on courses, you'll see everything that you guys have access to.
Mm hmm.
So.
Okay.
Good, good question, though. And all of you guys should have full access to the course at this point. If you're having any issues getting access, please let me know. Uh, you can email me at Jonathan. I'll put my email in there. Uh, and you can let me know and I'll help you get access if you're having any issues.
I also want to remind you. Is there a sign on uh, for access?
Yes, there is. So if you bought the course, you'll have an email from us. Uh, that will say that if you if you haven't got that, let me know and I'll resend it to you. Let me just. Let me just quickly look for you a minute, Adolphus. Uh, let's see here, contacts.
Strategies. Dot com.
Um. If you could email me your email address, Adolphus, I'm not showing you. Uh, doesn't mean it's not there. I just may mean I'm looking in the wrong place real quick, but I'd have to dig in. I'm not showing that that's showing up there. Um. The other thing that you then should be doing is let me share my screen again. So we have. We also have this private community A I prompting mastery course. And if you guys can join in there, then this is a just a Facebook group. Looks like we've got two requests that have just come in. I will automatically approve you guys if you've done that, if you've got your. So in this case. Nobody's giving me. Oh, Yvonne, I know. So we'll get her in. Um. You gotta give me your email address so I can make sure that I know you purchased it, though. Um. But then we post updates in here. You can see some different updates that came out today. Uh, we try to keep and this is private. We spend time in here. So if you need access to me. Outside of these events, at any point in time, you can go in here and ask questions and I or my team will respond to you. Robert and Sharon, you guys had a question?
Uh, two, uh, first one being, uh, the training courses. Are those available at? Um, on the on the Facebook page?
Um, you can get it. There's a link that's posted there. Um, but no, you're gonna have to go. That's that's not through Facebook. It's actually through. So you're gonna see a site that'll look like this for login. Let me pull this up real quick. It's T A C. I'll I'll paste this link for you guys as well so that you.
Okay. And then and then. Go ahead.
Go ahead. No.
Oh, second question was, are all i- is the chat going to be available?
No.
Yes, so you should be able to download it, but if you're not seeing that option to save it. Um, let me just see here. Normally, there's an option to save it and I'm not seeing that at the moment. Uh, it should show up as part of the recording. Hang on, let me just see here. Okay, if you go um. Up in the upper, so if you open the chat window in Zoom.
Yeah.
And right below meeting chat, it'll say A I prompting mastery session.
Yeah.
And there should be three dots next to that.
Okay, okay, got it. Yeah.
Click the three dots and say save chat and it'll save it as a text file to your computer and you'll have everything you need.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Great question.
Yeah, dude.
Good question. All right, I've got about one minute left. Any other questions I can answer for you guys in the last minute? Otherwise, I would encourage you to see you in the group. Like I said, if you have any questions or having any problems accessing the course. You should have all gotten an email from me. Uh, most of you, you've got some at least because you showed up here. So that's good. Uh, that had the link in it, but you should also have a link to the course where you can log in. If you're having any difficulties accessing, let me know. And we'll get that fixed up for you. Uh, doesn't happen very often, but once in a while we get the. Computers can be cantankerous and if we're running into an issue, just let me know. So. Everybody, I want to thank you so much for your time today. I thank you for buying the course. I'm excited to help each of you out and I just want to encourage you. Don't forget to go into the group and ask questions when you have them there. We check that daily and we do work hard to answer those questions. Uh, and sometimes we'll do it via video. If it's a video walkthrough, other times it's a simple answer. But uh, we're here to be a resource for you and to answer your questions. So uh, don't hesitate to ask. We want to be of help. So with that, we'll have the recording out. Everybody will get a copy of that. It'll be probably tomorrow or Saturday because. I've got to actually get it edited because it saves the video file separately from the screen share, but we'll have that out in the next couple of days. So you guys can watch the replay if you desire as well. So. So with that, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day and I look forward to seeing you in the group. Bye bye, everyone.